Good morning, folks. It's been awhile since I've done an episode and this is gonna be a pretty long one. So, let me get into it. Just warn you, this was gonna take awhile. Purpose describes what we want and need to do this. Something in us that just says, "I need to do this." Ambition describes who and what we wanna be. How we wanna be seen by others. Now, purpose is more important than ambition. It's much more important than ambition. However, humans are imperfect conflicting blends of purpose and ambition. Who and what we think we are and who and what we wanna be sometimes hinders what we want and need to do. We live in a world with a litany of global issues that have to be addressed locally and with a long-term view. And also with creativity, strategy, synergy, and power. Now, power is the ability to produce efficient work either through your might or your might through the wise and skillful use of resources, interests, communication, and expertise. Now ladies and gentlemen, the easiest way to see whether I'm being led by purpose or ambition is to review my work. How much power am I generating in what I do every day? I gotta check my outputs and inputs, my achievements, my activities, and my processes. See, I can't mistake activity for achievement. Doing it, that doesn't mean that I'm getting it done. You feel me? Let me think out loud and review the work done by a local project that I've supported closely over the past year. And that's gonna help me figure out where I am today and tomorrow. Whenever I evaluate a project or an organization, I use an approach that I call GRASP. GRASP is an acronym. It reminds me to improve output and efficiency in any effort by examining group morale, relationships, administration, spiritual tone, planning, and problem solving. Now, this approach in and of itself does not ensure victory, but it does provide an approach, an objective way to develop adjustments to how you're working. Alright, let's get into this. I live in a city whose school district has an 80% black and Hispanic Latino population. But school board is 87% white. That's a problem at first glance. Let's just call it a diversity problem. Now, a closer look unveils a series of unfortunate events executed by our local school board, including its handling of integration in the 1960s. Way back in the 1960s, a time we should not be concerned about anymore because it was so long ago. These efforts seem to maintain a school-within-the-school approach that benefits the privileged who do not wanna spend their money on private education. And that is what it is. It is pretty well documented. The approach maintains a racial divide that is as far as the eye can see if you're one of the disenfranchised and if you do not think with your eyes. Now, if you're the type of cat that thinks with your eyes, you don't see a problem here whatsoever. All is well. Why are these dag on folks always complaining? You know what? See, that makes my chili a little warmer every time I hear it. Even more so when I say it, even though I'm saying it kinda tongue-in-cheek. So, to maintain my balance and blood pressure, I gotta affirm some things. I have to remember that there's some villain in every hero and there's a little hero in every villain. And I'd say that another way. Conflicts rarely come down to pure good versus pure evil. Both sides are flawed in very human ways. So, winners must often conquer their own conceit before they conquer defeat. And I practice patience, listening, and discernment with my team, with my folks, far more than I do with the opposition. Because remember now, you're on opposite sides. You don't get together a whole lot. You're always with your team. So, you gotta check your team and you gotta check yourself. Cause we're good at getting in our own way. But I digress. Let me get back on track. I'm working with a team, a group, that came together one year after our local high school's first black principal in forever in hundred-plus years was fired. No, reassigned and promoted to the district office pretty much in the middle of the first year on the job. Now, getting to the district office is on most principals' bucket list. That's where you're trying to go. And so, at first glance, what's the problem? See, I've worked as a high school administrator. And I served on the school board at that same school. I've been around a lot of firings. More than enough to know a couple of things about how to make a firing look like a promotion. To save face and to make any protesters or questioners look like a confused, unreasonable, unruly mob of folks that I can easily dismiss. So, this firing, if you will, brought a group of concerned citizens together to speak truth to power. "We want our principal back," was the very simple demand. And power concedes nothing without a demand. Now, school board said, "We hear your concerns," but supported the superintendent's recommendation to reassign the former principal to promote them. This put the group into a "what now?" mode. What do we do now? Then the group kinda began to wane and disperse. Momentum kinda subsided. And that's when I came along. Now, I joined the fight by attending a meeting where far fewer people showed up than had attended the school board protest meeting where the news media was there in full force to bring this story to the masses. So, it's well. I mean, this is okay. Cause now's the time to get down to brass tacks and strategy. You kinda don't need or want a crowd for that. You need an assembly of courageous, kind, talented folks who have supreme work ethic. Then you can execute, get some things done. Let's do something here. I need to assign some pseudonyms, like some superhero identities to the main characters to withhold names and such. Forgive me. Let's go with like a Justice League flavor. So, let's use Batman, Aquaman, Superman, Captain America. That's three DC comic guys. For those of you who are into the comic books like that. I think one Marvel comic guy. Captain America's a Marvel guy. I apologize, I'm doing this on the fly. I apologize for the lack of comic and gender diversity. I'll work on that. I'll do that later. I digress. Now, let's do some character development. Let's start with Superman. Superman is your social justice veteran. He's the go-to guy locally for any and all civil unrest. This cat exudes wisdom, charm, analysis, synthesis. And he delivers it with a booming voice, a commanding presence, and great oratorical skill. He's what I call a statesman, that Superman. Aquaman. Aquaman is tall, handsome, strapping lad with lots of retired muscles. He's a little older, but you can tell strapped up once upon a time. Got a very active brain, kind heart, very large lungs that are not afraid to tell you what he's thinking. He will release his thoughts with force and pressure. He's a former scholar, entrepreneur, author, teacher. He actually retired from our local city school system. Also, an advertising executive who combines creativity, a slightly controlling spirit. More on that later. And independent wealth to advance his agenda. You tell this brother's doing alright by his fearlessness. Not too worried about anybody bothering him or stopping him from saying what he wants to say, doing what he wants to do. Then you got Captain America. Captain America is dedicated to making Captain America great again. Not like Trump, but through a daily devotion and self-promotion of personal, academic, professional, volunteer, and civic excellence. That's the best way I can put it. Then there's Batman. Plot spoiler now. I'm Batman. I'm Batman. Quiet, but not silent. Mysterious stealth soldier of the night with a unique set of skills and gadgets acquired over a long career that make him easy to engage, but hard for the good guys and the bad guys to read and control. You gotta be careful with the Batman. Now, let's thicken the plot and get back to this meeting that I was talking about. So, Batman, now remember, I'm the Batman. Called Superman. Asked Superman, "Hey, what's next? What's next?" Superman divulged this aforementioned meeting that was organized by Captain America. Superman invited Batman. Now, Captain America has assumed the mantle of authority as leader of the protest group. I don't think Superman told Captain America that Batman was coming to the meeting. Batman arrived at the meeting first. Just so happened, he lived five minutes away from the location. He greeted everybody that walked into the room. When Captain America arrived, he immediately lamented the low turnout. The Batman reassured that, "We have just enough people to get some work done." Captain America shot Batman one of those, "Who's this guy?" looks. Captain America opened the meeting by summarizing the events that culminated in the now-form of principal's reassignment. He then outlined several next steps. One of which would be spearheaded by Aquaman, who would lead the next meeting's discussion. Captain America then gave way to Superman, who during his remarks introduced the Batman as a peculiar, quiet dude who was a bad brother. I'm not sure I would've used those same words or done that same intro, but that's the way it goes, man, when someone else hands you the mic. They get to use the mic before they hand it to you. Batman then introduced himself and explained what he hoped to contribute to the effort, mainly his experience and his playmaking ability that I described using some different words a little while ago. Now, at the end of the meeting, Batman introduced himself to Aquaman and offered to support Aquaman in this part of the fight that Aquaman was gonna lead. They exchanged contact info. Aquaman added Batman to his personal email distribution list. And now, the Justice League has all met each other. We're about to set upon the course of change. Now, at the next meeting, Aquaman explains a strategy centered on filing a formal complaint against the school system for its historic systemic discrimination. Now, this complaint would pave the way for a possible lawsuit that may happen down the road. The heads nodded in approval during the meeting, but the real separation of wheat and chaff would occur when the work of drafting the complaint started cause this was an animal of a document. Now, after that meeting, the group further dispersed to enjoy summer vacation with families. Most of the momentum created by the recent firing and reassignment crisis quickly dissipated. I guess this is why folks of a certain persuasion never let a crisis go to waste. I digress. Batman soldiered forth and built a massive online city map to use for war room geospatial intelligence. And then he said, "You know, I know the kinda looks I get on a normal day. I know how they look at me if I say that this is for the war room and it's geospatial intelligence. And let me just tell them I got a map that can find almost anything in the city. Do it that way." That worked a lot better. Now, Aquaman put in some work too and contacted the other Justice League members just before school started in the fall. Couple of months have passed now, to deliver a draft of the complaint for peer review. He wants the Justice League to vet this thing that he has written. Because remember, see, he worked for the school district. So, there's lots of information that he's privy to that none of us know anything about. So, Batman read the document carefully, cause that's what Batman does, and found it to be full of both historical insights. That's I-N-S-I-G-H-T. And also full of a lot of insights. Now, that's I-N-C-I-T-E. So, Batman approached Aquaman and asked Aquaman to address this apparent tendency to show and tell. The document clearly shows a pattern of discrimination in forensic detail. Incontrovertible forensic detail. But it then went to the next level and told the reader how they should think about this discrimination. Now, that crosses a subtle but distinct line for Batman. When you're telling too much, it starts to sound like, it feel like coercion, manipulation, arm twisting. And that invites mistrust, defense, opposition. Aquaman agreed to edit his language, tone it down a little bit. But his writing revealed this controlling spirit that the Batman has now noticed more than once. By the way, writing is organized thought. So, when you read what somebody writes, you're getting the DNA of their intellect. You get to absorb it, you get to see it. Now, Captain America replied to the complaint later than the rest of the group. Gave no indication that he had actually reviewed it. Remember, this is a monster of a document and we're all about to put our John Hancock on it and say, "Alright, we down with whatever's about to happen here." Captain America offered a litany of supporting discipline data that spoke to little of the complaint's core content. Another red flag that he had perhaps not reviewed the document carefully. The other reviewers gave their input and were asked to meet at Aquaman's house to sign the document before submission. Now, this is just like the founding fathers' meeting to sign the Declaration of Independence. Now, your attendance at this meeting is more than simply showing up. You're showing up and saying, "I'm down with what we're about to do and I'm gonna do it like John Hancock. I will sign my name boldly to indicate the level to which I am down." Captain America notified the group that he would not attend the signing meeting, but he would instead attend the first school board meeting of the year. He would sign the document later. And he did. Shortly before the document was submitted, the superintendent, remember? The superintendent who had fired and reassigned the high school principal at the end of the previous school year, retired. "I'm done, y'all." Now, we may never know why, but it's not a stretch to say that perhaps the pressure of the recent protests, maybe the protest was underestimated a little bit and it contributed to a stress that needed some relief and rest. So, we about to exit stage left here. After the documents vetted and submitted, Superman told Aquaman that the Justice League should hold a press conference to announce the complaint. Now, press conferences are tricky risk and reward propositions. Let me, let me explain. See, the risks include giving the local media machine largely a supporter of the local school system. A head start on influencing public opinion against the complaint and the protesters who filed it. Now, the rewards included heightened public awareness of the changed effort and its leaders. What we call social capital, DAP. Walking down the street, people see you and they recognize you. They don't dap you up. Aquaman, Superman, and Batman, in that order, spoke during the press conference, which was covered by all local TV news and several print media outlets. The public reaction was widespread but mixed. The faces of the protests, the people that were seen on TV, were hailed as heroes, but were also assailed locally as some angry uninformed fools. Captain America expressed his dismay that the press conference was organized without his input and permission and was hosted at an inconvenient time for him. He announced that he's gonna take a step back from these Justice League activities, but he did not resign his membership, as it were. Now, Aquaman, Superman, and Batman beat Captain America's approach. Soldiered forth without comment, but with an unspoken mutual understanding that Captain America is a little suspect and watching. Now that the complaints filed, it would take an indefinite amount of time to have it reviewed by the authorities to whom it was submitted. And that vague timeline was further thrust into chaos by the selection of one Donald J. Trump as the 45th president of these United States of America. Onto the next move though. And that's helping minority candidates claim seats on the school board. See, there's no moss growing under our feet. We're trying to play chess here, not checkers. So, now Batman shares the map he had built previously with Aquaman and Superman and he demonstrated how his geospatial intelligence could support any city candidate's successful campaign for anything. He didn't call it geospatial intelligence. Now, he just said, "Look at all the stuff that's on this map and what we can use it to locate and strategize and organize." Now, Aquaman and Superman are busy too. They spoke with a black and Hispanic candidate who planned to seek a school board seat in a special election. A member resigned and hand-selected someone to take their place, but then this candidate came forward too and said, "No, let's have a race for this thing." Let's have a race instead of a coronation. So, Batman joined the group for the first and then several more strategy and advisory meetings. At least Batman thought these were gonna be strategy and advisory meetings. They were that, but there were a lot of other stuff too. Batman became concerned by the candidate's lack of experience and awareness. It's the best way I can, I can call it. Now, he's further concerned by Aquaman's and Superman's somewhat detailed, somewhat domineering, though certainly helpful, campaign advice. See how tricky it is to navigate these situations? See, Batman thought they were guiding the candidate too much. Too much. And not letting the candidate sit and steer their own course and then be advised by wise counsel on this ads-as-needed basis. But Batman wanted this candidate of change to be one who could stand and deliver independently. But decided that this candidate might not be able to. He talked to Aquaman and Superman offline about his concerns and his plans to conduct private, one-on-one, performance-based interviews for both school board candidates in this special election to help them prepare for the work required of school board members. Now, there's a reason Batman chose to do it that way. See, if both candidates appear shaky, then at least Batman knows now, "Well, this candidate is probably okay." If one candidate is less shaky than the other, then that feedback too will help either or both of them. See, the city benefits with a strong race between two strong people. You feel me? Even if it's not my guy, if it's a strong candidate, then that's, that's good. But I digress. Aquaman and Superman encouraged Batman's plans, but to Batman's knowledge, neither addressed the candidate directly about the candidate's lack of preparedness. Now, both of the candidates responded initially to the interview invitation with enthusiasm, the type of enthusiasm that all politicians display when they're trying to get elected, but neither followed through. Batman accepted that perhaps neither candidate saw anything to gain by exposing their lack of preparation to anyone. And that was later confirmed through a conversation with another candidate, but we'll, we'll get to that later. Why in the world would I let somebody see that I don't know what I'm talking about? This is the candidate mindset. That's not a good mindset, but that, that's real. Batman's perspective was that exposure of this lack of preparation in private would allow wise counsel to help address it. Heal what you feel. You make your bad stuff good, you make your good stuff better. I mean, that's, that's a good way to live. Now, to Batman, this lack of follow-through was another sign that the Justice League was not supporting a strong candidate. His concern grew upon considering, "Hey, man, how do I know that this hadn't been the plan all along? To support someone that the Justice League could control." Batman wasn't feeling that idea either. Now, he became a careful, intense listener and observer for the last couple of meetings he attended. And he didn't like what he was seeing. Now, Aquaman arranged a meeting with the new superintendent, the one that replaced the recently retired superintendent. Aquaman attended this meeting without Justice League members. It was held at Aquaman's house, same place where we signed the Declaration of Independence, so to speak. Now, he did provide a written summary of the meeting, but it was Aquaman's meeting, Aquaman's agenda. Now, Superman divulged that he too had an upcoming solo meeting with the new superintendent and that it too would be Superman's meeting, Superman's agenda. That little trend going here. The meeting after meeting of these strategy sessions, if you will, became mired in the minutia of organizing the candidate's campaign, which was the candidate's job. We're talking about helping the candidate make videos and we're helping her make the video and talking about who's gonna edit the video. We in there too much. We in the weeds and Batman is a weed guy. The weed guy says, "Nah, man, we in the weeds." When the weed guy says, "You're in the weeds, you're in the weeds." Then in the middle of one of the meetings, Aquaman cracked an awkward joke. One of those jokes that's not really a joke about Batman's silence. Batman's loud silence. Superman co-signed it with a loud laugh. Batman knew, "This probably needs to be my last meeting," Batman said. Batman is quiet, but not silent and knows that his silence speaks volumes and other people are seeing that too. It's time to go solo. Alright, now Batman arranged his own meeting with the new superintendent. This is gonna be Batman's meeting, Batman's agenda. Batman found the new superintendent to be fair-minded. Batman found the new superintendent to be fair-minded and like-minded. They discussed the litany of school system matters, including the recently filed complaint. Batman revealed that he was part of the Justice League responsible for the complaint, just so we don't build relationships with any pretense, any secrets. However, the discussion with the new superintendent continued with the same momentum even after this admission, and that was a good sign to Batman. Batman and the new superintendent found synergy around the idea of increasing parental engagement and savvy. Through stakeholder relationship and resource building. Here's why. Let's say that all of the chicanery uncovered. In this historical systemic discrimination, let's, let's say all of that happened, alright? Even if it all happened, there's only so much remedying you're gonna get. From people who are basically empowered by that same litany of unfortunate events. These people who benefit from that, you can't depend on them to police it. And there are pathologies, problems, if you will, that have resulted from this treatment. See, those problems are still there, even if you get somebody to address it, the problems are still there. So you gotta address this thing in a policy way, but you've also gotta address this thing in a human way. You've gotta get nose to nose and face to face with the people who have been impacted by all of this. Help those people heal and challenge them to be better and not bitter. That's tricky, but see, Batman is realizing that maybe he needs to butter the other side of the bread. Let these cats handle the policy, Batman's gotta deal with the, the people, anyway. They resumed this discussion a couple of months later at another meeting and pledged to revisit it before school starts again. Batman got some work done in this meeting, meeting gave Batman a lot to think about where Batman needed to be involved in all of this. We've all got different roles, Batman's gotta find his place. Batman also attended an event sponsored by Captain America. When he was trying to make Captain America great again, as a goodwill gesture, just to keep some connection. Captain America called Batman shortly after the event ended. Batman agreed to meet Captain America at our local Aldi in the parking lot. Captain America asked Batman whether Captain America should run for the school board. It just so happens that Captain America, Batman, and Aquaman all live in the same city ward. And Aquaman and Captain America live on the north side of the ward, Batman lives on the south side of the ward. Batman answered the question by describing this private one-on-one performance-based interview. For school board candidates to help them prepare for the work of school board members. In other words, y'all probably know me now, I'm a little subtle. Batman was saying to Captain America, I will help you to strengthen your weaknesses in private. I'll at least help you do that, that might be all I help you do. Now this might have been the only comment that Batman made during this whole meeting. Batman learned that Captain America wanted his agenda to be heard and encouraged, that's one of the reasons why he wanted to talk to the Batman. Now the other reason is he's recruiting Batman to his army of volunteer campaign workers. He wants access to Batman's geospatial intelligence or all that stuff he's got on that map. Batman is in charge of the south side. Let's just say Batman ain't trying to volunteer for nobody's army, not like that. And we move on. Last week, Captain America reached out to the Justice League to report that he had met with this focus group of ladies. Who were very concerned about his school board candidacy, because they found out he's suing the school system. Now remember, the complaint's not a lawsuit, but it is a precursor to one. Now even if this group was conflating or confusing the two based on what the media had led them to believe, it's certainly related. They're on the wrong queue, but they in the right church, see? Captain America revealed plans to the Justice League that he would announce publicly through the local newspaper. That he was never a part of filing this complaint, he didn't even have a copy. Now this one's what you call a true lie, he really wasn't any substantive part of the complaint. He did sign it, now he wouldn't sign it in front of everybody else, but he did sign it. Know why he signed it, but now wanted to distance himself from it, it's a troubling unanswered question. But there are lots of possible answers, none of which are very flattering feeling towards Captain America. And the other Justice League members can read between the lines. Now here's where it started to get a little dicey. Aquaman, remember those lungs? Aquaman expanded both of them, he let Captain America have it. Let him know that Aquaman was not pleased with Captain America's tactics or character. And completely withdrew his support from anything that Captain America's trying to do. And Superman, Superman is recovering from major surgery. But he emerged to offer his own eloquent but very strong rebuke of Captain America. Now the Batman is a soldier, he's a soldier of peace. Now he too spoke to Captain America offline and offered that the strategies was very sketchy. And that it would certainly cost Captain America some respect. Captain America lumped all these responses, pledged to soldier forth with his race. Emboldened by these stern rebukes and determined to have the last laugh on all his haters. He thanked the Justice League for showing their true colors, and we're like, no, Captain America, thank you. And that brings us to today. So let me take another. So where are we? How'd we get here? And where are we going? We still gotta run this race, we still gotta go somewhere. Now remember, I evaluate projects, organizations, whatever, using the grasp approach. Grasp reminds me that I improve output and efficiency in any situation by examining group morale. Relationships, administration, spiritual tone, planning, and problem solver. Grasp does not ensure victory, but it does provide an approach. And an objective way to develop adjustments to that approach. So let's start by examining group morale, give me some latitude here. This is what I think about where everybody's head and, and, and heart might be right now. Based on getting to know these cats for a little while. Now Aquaman may wanna fight and control more than he wants to win. Captain America may want to win, his version of winning. And control more than he wants to fight, he doesn't wanna fight. Superman knows that the fight is long. The fight provides his social capital and his raison d'etre, his reason for being. So he's okay with fighting, fighting for a long time, cause he's gonna get something out of that. Now Batman is more concerned with the work than he is with the fight or the control or the win. He's aware of and eternally frustrated with how poorly freedom fighters handle the work. Easily defeated when you can't work, when you can't produce here or here, easily defeated. This weakens the fight, it puts winning out of reach. And it leaves control of your teammates as the only attainable goal, and that might not be what you set out to do, but. That, that kinda ends up being what happens. Now this might be why so many of our social activism efforts. Either end up crumbling or resembling the institutional cultures. That they claim to oppose in war against, end up looking just like. But I digress. Let's look at relationships. Now Aquaman and Superman are usually aligned, even in dissent. They dissent within this little framework that keeps them together. Now they're both older scholarly cats, veterans of many wars. And they both have similar controlling natures, which are exacerbated by their experience advantage. Been around a little bit longer than everybody else, okay, well, maybe you come by some of that domineering, honestly, but it's still domineering. And that is certainly not attractive to younger generations who are looking for people to emulate, certainly not looking for anybody to control. Now, uh, Captain America, that brother is isolated. He's consumed with making Captain America great again, getting, getting connected, getting appointed. He's so concerned about getting that seat at the table. That, that's become cliche now, but he's so concerned about that seat at the table, he doesn't even see that that seat is a platter. Right in the middle of the table, reserved for the turkey, he won't see that until it's too late. He's too busy to handle business. That's how you know you're too busy, you can't handle business, you're too busy. His purpose may be easily compromised by his ambition. Batman, Batman's the ombudsman, the outsider, the equalizer. And he maintains balance, neutrality, respect, and protects his time. By not buddying up too much. And by questioning the status quo, even the status quo of his side. Certainly the status quo of the other side. Now this brother's at his best and his worst, when he's quiet and observant, which makes him hard to read. Now that stealth nature is at least one of the reasons why he often runs afoul of the cats. Who want to be in control, it's never hard to spot them, he usually butts heads with them. There's trust, is earned through demonstrated work ethic and efficiency, nothing else. We're gonna get together, we're gonna do something, and the way it's done tells a Batman all he needs to know about you. He travels a lonesome road, but would rather be alone by himself than be alone with an ineffective team. Now remember, I'm the Batman, I know a little bit about me. Alright, got a news flash, good people. I learned a long time ago that morale in relationships. Influence administration, spiritual tone, planning, and problem solving, so in the interest of time and energy. Let's just say that each of those aspects of output and efficiency, they need improvement, now let's move on. So where do we go now? Where do we go now? My good news is that all the Justice League members are too stubborn to just give up and withdraw. So we'll all continue to do what we have been doing. Aquaman's gonna fight, and he has the resources and energy to do so. Superman's gonna continue to be the social justice go-to guy after he recovers, Godspeed in your recovery. Aquaman and Superman will continue to collaborate. Captain America is gonna be Captain America, whoever that is. And as long as he that shaky dude that I've seen, it may be best staying clear of Captain America. Now I, well, the Batman, but let me turn back into me. Now I'll focus on increasing parental engagement and savvy through stakeholder relationship and resource building, because. Well, let me hang on there, perhaps what we've done together is what we're supposed to do together. That's, that's not hard to see now. Perhaps the next steps are all solo steps, if so, it is well. Michael, Andrew Maine, Marlon, Randy, and Tito. Everybody except for Jackie released solo projects after the Jackson Five and the Jacksons broke up. So, if so, it is well. Now one of my parting lessons is a, is a note, note to self that I wanna share. Good people, most of us are adept at identifying and articulating flaws in other people. And delivering that bad news with an accompanying smackdown. Most of us are able to articulate opinions, no matter how uninformed they are, ad nauseam and with force. Most of us though are terrible, horrible at self-honesty. Most of us could stand to develop more empathy. Now if we're ever honest about our lack of self-honesty, we would discover a well of empathy within us. We'd have no choice but to mature into more graceful and merciful people. We would handle delicate matters privately and with sensitivity. We would speak truth, but we would recognize that it's just our truth. And others may know and speak a completely different truth, that's no less true, cause it's what you believe. Now we would deliver the harshest versions of our truth with the most abundant grace and mercy. Now that truth still might not be heard, probably won't be heard, but if we can deliver it with grace. And walk away having sown a helpful seed of kindness and wisdom. And we know who to mess with and who to leave alone. So we may never overcome injustice in this world. That's, that's a tall order, folks, but it's my hope that we can all one day at least overcome ourselves.